I think we'd like to start and ask you to just take a minute or so and describe for us how you feel your presence on the school board will make a difference, or would have made a difference had you been on the board during the last two years.
Well, I think over the last two years, I would have done two things that are related. One is, I would have advocated for a more positive and proactive response on the Office for Civil Rights issues, which I think would have been positive in terms of, you know, addressing whatever issues there are to address there, and also would have avoided a whole set of activities around resisting the investigations and so forth that really have just been a real loss of focus for district staff and a real unnecessary expenditure of funds. So I think the last two years, that was not only a missed opportunity to make things better, it also occupied a lot of space that could have been used on things that are positive for students. And so what I think I'll bring to the board going forward, which I think in a way is more important, is I will bring a focus on getting things done that put students first. You know, the question for me is, what is it that we can do with the resources that we have and the time that we have that can benefit kids? And so you can, I think, see pretty well what I think those things are from the things that I've worked on in the past, you know, issues around achievement, around addressing stress in our schools that inhibits learning and that diminishes health, issues that I'm raising in the campaign now, for example, a 13th elementary school, foreign languages in our elementary schools, enhanced foreign languages in our middle schools, a focus on consistency across teachers in course content and grading and so forth. I mean, these are all good things that we all want, and they're consistent, I think, with our district's priorities. But what we haven't done very well is to execute on those things and actually get them done. And so I will really be putting a focus on getting those good things done.
And we'll get to some of those later on in the interview. You've got a background in data analysis and program evaluation, and have spoken regularly at board meetings on that subject as different issues have come up. And on many occasions, you've challenged the quality and the presentation of data made by staff to the school board. And I'm wondering if you view those shortcomings a result of inadequate data, poor staff work, or an effort to sway board members to a particular position?
I don't actually, I would not choose any of those three options, actually. And one thing I can say is that over the period of time that I have watched the district deal with data, they've gotten better. And I would give a lot of credit to Diana Wilmot for that. I think she's left the district now.
She has just left.
Yeah, she's just left. But what I saw there was a real commitment on her part, which I think was honest and effective, to try to really interrogate the data to understand what it meant for kids and around these issues of achievement and so forth. So I saw a real improvement in the district's handling of data over those years. I think that some of that is because of the work that I and others did in demonstrating the importance of looking at that data. So I think that the ability to say things like, you know, "There are areas where we are not doing as well for groups of students as other districts," right, and to use data to do that was kind of revelatory for the board. And so they got an appetite for looking at that, and I think they put some emphasis on that. And I think that staff also saw the value of that. One of the things I'm encouraged by and optimistic about is that I think that our new superintendent has the same, or even more voracious appetite for data. And I expect that we will see even higher quality work in that area.
Is it going to be hard for you to, if you're elected, balance the need for an efficiently-run meeting that ends before 11 o'clock with your inclination to do a deep dive into data and ask a ton of questions and probe staff? How is that going to work?
Yeah, that's an interesting question. I think it's important, first of all, as a board member, to do the work ahead of the meeting. And so to identify, you know, what are the critical questions to ask? So in very many cases, when you're looking at data, there are a few critical data points, you know, a handful, and those really change your way of thinking about the situation. So I don't think we're actually, we're talking about spending a lot more time. I can say that as a board member, I think my contribution to spending less time would be to, you know, say, to always be on topic and to speak when I have a contribution that produces some incremental advantage over what others have already said. And I think that would probably help.
Ken, I wanted to ask you about your role up till now vis-à-vis the board. One of your fellow candidates said that "it's harder to govern than it is to advocate." As an advocate, headlines and soundbites are effective, but this is not an approach for leading. And I was wondering if you agree with that statement? And if so, how does your experience, do you think, align with governance versus advocacy? Or is there a marriage of the two?
Well, I think that the kind of advocacy that I've practiced, and that I've practiced in company with a lot of other people, parents and community members across Palo Alto, has been focused on bringing data and evidence to bear, on illuminating the important questions around what's going to benefit students, and advocating for a course of action that, based on that data and evidence, is calculated to achieve positive results. And so I think that way of thinking and selecting what issues are important to work on based on their impact on students' worth, I think that's completely consistent with governing. I also think that the focus that I've had on not being a lone wolf, right, but instead on bringing together a coalition of people from all different walks of life across Palo Alto, north and south, different high schools and so forth, I think that's completely consistent with governing.
Now, you'll be on the board with, if you are elected, with people who you've taken opposing views towards. Can you give us a sense of how will you mend bridges or how will you work with them if up till now, there's been some of an oppositional stance?
Well, I think that our board members are completely committed to the mission of the district and to the welfare of kids. And so what I think is that everybody, me and whoever else is elected and whoever else is serving on the board, is really there to do that work, to put kids first. And if you're doing that, then I don't think that there is any reason for past disagreements to affect how you're working together. I mean, these are important issues that we're dealing with, and it's reasonable for people to disagree about them. It's expected, it's correct, you know? Issues that rise to the board level, in some extent, you know, are issues that need deciding, and they need some discussion. So I don't see an issue there in terms of working relationships going forward.
Is there some assurance that you can give people who may be on the fence that you're someone who can disagree with people and then have a resolution even if you're still retaining opposite opinions? Can you give an example of?
Well, I can give you two examples. One of them is my successful career at Google and Netflix and other places before that. I mean, I work in a highly collaborative environment. I work with team members, I work with people who've worked for me, I work with, you know, people above me. It's impossible to be successful in an environment like that if you can't have a disagreement and then move on. We have disagreements all the time. In terms of the district and school issues, I would point probably most directly to the homework committee. The homework committee on which I served came out with a consensus policy on homework that I think was a great policy. It didn't go in with that. It went in with a lot of people who disagreed quite vehemently about what's the purpose of homework, how much homework should people do, and so forth. I had my positions, other people had their positions. What we did in the committee was, we set those differences aside, we looked at data and evidence and brain science on homework, and we narrowed the range of disagreement, and, you know, we had a student-focused discussion. And the positive outcome, you know, I think went a very long way. In fact, it went all the way to making people feel comfortable about the process and also comfortable with all those people who they disagreed with so vehemently in the past. So I think that, you know, we have sometimes contentious school politics in Palo Alto. You know, I mean, look at things that occurred before I came along, Mandarin immersion, everyday math, you know, the previous superintendent before the last. I mean, so it's, and what we don't have is sort of permanent divisions, I think, in the community. And I don't see that around the issues that I've advocated on or these earlier issues.
Have any of the current board members who will remain on the board after this election reached out to you at all during this campaign?
They haven't reached out to me, no. I did have a very pleasant conversation with Heidi Amberling several months ago, but they have not reached out to me, no.
The superintendent is apparently in the process of coming up with a few program areas that, in his view, need assessment and a hard look at right off the bat in his administration. But he hasn't said what they are yet. He wants to do a little more thinking and fact gathering before he decides what those are. I'm wondering, as somebody that's followed this board pretty carefully over the last couple of years, what would be your three or four areas, programmatic areas, where in your judgment, we need to rather quickly assess its effectiveness and move towards some sort of policy decision or change?
Well, the first area that I would point to is special education. And in fact, the superintendent told us last week that he's going to move special education to report directly to him, which I think is an indication that he sees both its importance and I think sees the fact that it's, you know, it presents an opportunity for evaluation. And I say that because I have heard, and I agree with him, and I say that because I've heard from many special education families a sense of frustration about the responsiveness of the district to their needs and what they view often as a resistance to their requests and communications that puzzles them and frustrates them because, after all, what they are doing is looking for services that their children need. So, and in fact, a year ago, I urged the board to adopt as a focused goal investigating its relationship with special education families because I saw that issue in lots of conversations that I've had. And I think, to some extent, it was revealed in the issues around the Office for Civil Rights. So I think special education is definitely one area where I would look to. I think another area that he has highlighted that I also think is quite critical is this issue of consistency across teachers in courses in the district. I think if you look at the Strategic Plan Survey, even teachers, a majority of teachers don't believe that we have consistency there, let alone students and parents. And also issues of equity and service quality across schools and programs in the district. You know, one, I think, fundamental principle that I talked about in the last campaign and I am repeating now is that, you know, the quality of services that we deliver should not vary depending on what school you attend or what neighborhood you live in, that every child should get the best of what we have to offer. And, you know, that means program evaluation and looking at what works and what doesn't, and then making changes. I appreciated his comment about the Maker Studio. I don't know if any of you went over there, but he was there at the Maker Studio. It was a great place, really terrific. And what he said is, even a place that seems to us that great, we should be looking at to see whether or not it is positively affecting teaching and learning as against the other options that we have for those dollars in that space. And I think that's exactly the right attitude.
Counseling has been one issue that's come up where people question whether or not the value that the students are getting out of it are comparable. And I'm wondering if you could address the idea of comparable services or programs versus uniform same programs? Do you think it's necessary to have, in some ways, the exact same program distributed amongst all schools? Or can schools have the same program area, just totally different programs, but they're comparable in their outcomes or their effectiveness?
Well, I mean, the first criterion has to be, are we delivering equal quality services, comparable services? And in terms of counseling, what we discovered is that we weren't and that the services that Pali students were receiving were substantially more effective than the ones that Gun students were receiving. And so the first thing we need to be able to do in that case is to assure Gun parents that they're not being disadvantaged in counseling services by attending Gun. One of the things that I have been disappointed by is the fact that we are not putting the metrics in place and the measurements in place to be able to answer that question. The counseling survey that was administered three years ago by Kalen Zhang was an extremely detailed list of items that really measured that question in a lot of different areas. The school board indicated its desire at that time that that be repeated, but we haven't done that, and I think that's absolutely critical. The question about whether or not we need to have exactly identical services, well, the answer is no. But we also need to make sure that we're investing our resources effectively. I know that Heidi Amberling talked in the last election about, you know, 12 different anti-bullying programs. If we have 12 different anti-bullying programs, and they're all equally effective, that's good, but that shouldn't end the conversation. There is also a conversation about whether we should be investing our district's time and energy in developing 12 different anti-bullying programs because those are dollars and attention and staff time that could be devoted to something else. So I think that, like Dr. McGee here, again, we really need to be asking the hard questions about whether we are investing district resources wisely. And sometimes that requires that we say, you know, "We don't want 12 anti-bullying programs. We want to get the benefits of scale and attention that we get from having, you know, a single program," say.
So just before we leave the counseling subject, you not only were an advocate for comparable outcomes, but you are an advocate for a specific type of counseling program.
Right.
In the interim period here, Gun has implemented a few steps to attempt to move it closer to have some similarities to the Pali system, certainly not adopting it. If hypothetically, a survey, a follow-up survey, were to show comparable satisfaction rates between the two different counseling programs, I'm not clear on whether that would end the issue for you and we'd move on to something else, or whether you would still be an advocate for a best practices approach and deciding what really should be the uniform high school counseling program, drawing from the best features of both experiments or both experiences?
Well, what I, in that case, if we actually had comparable services and comparable resources presumably generating those services, I would not pursue, you know, a uniform program between the two high schools. Not because I don't think it would be a good idea in the abstract to have a single program. I think, you know, I think it makes sense in terms of, again, economies of scale and interchange of ideas across teachers and so forth. But frankly, there's other things at that point to work on in the district.
You've got to be in battles.
Yeah, right. I mean, there are other things in the district to work on that will get a higher impact from the attention of the board and staff than getting that incremental improvement. So if we got to that point, I would be happy to turn attention to other issues.
Are you satisfied with the degree of satisfaction with the Pali TA system that's been?
Well, no. I mean, I think that we are, we should be, and I think we are actually, in that community and also at Gun, committed to getting better. I don't think anybody is satisfied in the sense that, you know, it's time to stop, and they've had a number of reforms, changes, improvements in that system. I mean, one of the things that I think is really positive is the level of interest in continuous improvement. And one of the things that I think is positive at Gun in particular is that there is a lot more focus on counseling and innovation in counseling, the counselor of the day, and, you know, all sorts of program changes that, you know, they are completely committed to making what they have work better.
To talk about the achievement gap for a minute?
Yes.
So the Palo Alto School District is performing less well than other high-achieving school districts, as well as some of the lower-achieving school districts uniformly. And I'm wondering, what kinds of programs have you seen in other places or would you advocate for bringing to the Palo Alto School District so that our lower-achieving students can meet a bar?
So one of the things we need to do there is to be a little more precise about where the areas of weakness are and where the areas of strength are. And you might remember that this is what I attempted to do a few years ago, looking at the CST data. So for example, I may not be getting these numbers exactly right, but for African-American students in Algebra I, we were a number 165 in the state. And, you know, so, but that wasn't true of all math classes. Some science classes had this pattern. So the first thing we need to do is to use the data to kind of localize the problem. And then I think there's some practices that work better than others. You know, I think we should be looking at building a growth mentality into our teaching. You know, I think that there's math teaching innovations that have been shown to work for students. I think that, though, that what the role of a board member is, frankly, is less to generate pedagogical strategies. We have an enormously capable group of teachers to do that than to say, "We want to identify those areas," like I just did, "where we have shortfalls, and we want to make it clear that we have higher expectations for ourselves than that, and we want to direct whatever resources we need, whether that's teacher professional development or curricular changes or whatever, to getting on that problem, and we're going to monitor it until we've made the kind of progress that we want." I mean, I think that's the actual contribution that a board member can make here.
Where do you think the breakdown has been up till now? Has it been at the board level or the superintendent level or teacher level?
Why do we still have these issues? I think that there is an issue, there has been an issue of visibility. That when I brought forward that data, I was not, you know, people didn't go, "Ho-ho, I've already seen that." They were astonished, right, about these gaps. So I think that part of it is about visibility. I mean, I think one of the great uses of data is to shine a light on things that we didn't know. And I think that we can do more of that. I think, you know, Superintendent McGee is going to be doing more of that. I've already seen that kind of evidence. And I also think, I want to return to this point that I made before. I think the last two years have been very distracting to the organization and to the board. And they have taken their eye off the ball of student teaching and learning in a way that has really been unfortunate and I think has, you know, has meant that we haven't accomplished as much in these areas as we should or, I think, want to.
I'd like to shift gears to budget and financing for a moment. The district at the last board meeting, the superintendent and his staff presented the state of finances in the district, and the board pretty universally reacted with a fair amount of concern about what they were hearing in terms of the financial issues on the horizon. Do you think the district has been accurately presenting the finances as they exist in the district, in this board forum and in their materials, so that the public actually is able to understand what the financial condition of the schools are?
Well, I think in large terms, yes. I mean, I think the budget itself in terms of the expenses is clear. The reporting on the bonds is accurate.
I guess I don't mean that they're trying to change the numbers, but the--
The financial condition?
The financial condition and the flexibility that the board and community have with, given the financial condition of the district.
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. I mean, one issue I think that's clear that I identified, I think, possibly even the other night in the debate, is the overly conservative property tax projections that we use, which average 2%, which cause us to underestimate quite substantially our income when we're formulating a budget, and then cause us to essentially, by default, invest in what we call a reserve, which is really just a balance in our general fund. And the cost of that to the district is that we have an unrealistically low understanding of our operating income, and therefore, we might well choose not to do things that we actually have the capacity to do and that the taxpayers of the community really have a right to expect us to do with those dollars. They didn't send those dollars just to default, end up in a bank account. They sent them to be used for education. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't invest in reserves, and, you know, we have a board policy that sets our reserves, our overall reserves at 10% of the budget. It also doesn't mean that we shouldn't perhaps increase that further if we see contingencies up ahead, for example. But it means that we should do it planfully and intentionally, and we shouldn't do it behind our own back. I mean, you can see that there's an awareness of this by the fact that this last budget, I think, was adopted with a budget deficit, right? Well, that wasn't a real budget deficit, you know, because it was clear that the property tax revenues were going to be substantially greater than what the budget assumptions were. Well, let's just tell, you know, let's just have the real, our best projections upfront so that we can be fully informed rather than wait.
Is this positional? I mean, does this have to do with negotiating with the unions and negotiating with the city of Palo Alto or leases? Or is it just kind of inherent conservatism with the spending of money?
I think it's, I don't think it's positional. I don't think that, I mean, these are sophisticated actors on the other side of these negotiations. So I don't think that they're unaware of the real state of the--
No, I mean to the community.
I don't think so. I really would put it more in the realm of conservatism, tradition, and routine, you know? That I think that this is really more of, this is how we do things rather than something that is intentionally done. And what I think is that we haven't appreciated the cost of doing things that way in terms of the opportunity costs that I just talked about.
I was going to ask you about Coverly. And obviously, you know, the city and the board have been at odds about how to move forward with it, but you and all the other candidates have expressed support for finding a positive way forward. So I'm wondering what you think the board should do and what you, as a board member, would advocate for doing with Coverly?
Well, I think that the board is, well, what the board should do is work with the city on a plan for Coverly that will enable both the city and the school district to make forward progress. And, you know, specifically, if the city wants to go out and, you know, do a bond measure to do something different at Coverly, you know, we are all better off if we have a joint plan that enables them to do that. I think that the school board is well-positioned and uniquely positioned within the school district organization to take a broader view of the value of Coverly to the community because we are, we represent constituents who are citizens of the city and residents of the city, right, and not just parents and students. And the district staff are not really enabled to take that larger view. larger view, because they really are rooted in, grounded in the district. And so, I think the role of the school board is to say, "Well, we have a, we have a community asset here, that we can unlock more of that value for the community. And after all, our students, after school, where do they go? A lot of them go to Coverly. We can unlock that value, and we should."
But the problem, as I see it, is that the school district views Coverly as a financial resource right now.
Yeah, I think that's...
Not as a physical resource.
Right.
And it has declined to give the city any guidance as to when it will need it for a school. So, that...
Right, and I think...
The school district's attitude has been, "We don't know yet. We want to keep that as an option, so we can't give up the lease. But in the meantime, we're perfectly happy to have your money year after year instead." So, are you prepared to try to move this, the board, to some sort of clarity as to when it will commit itself to actually taking back that property as a school, so that the negotiations over community needs can be done in that context?
Well, I'm, what I'm committed to doing is producing clarity for the city. Whether that, whether we can be clear about when we're going to do school construction at this point, I don't think so. But what I think we can do is we can, we can look at that site, and we can develop a plan with the city that says, "Here's what we are going to reserve for school use. Here's land that we think would make sense as a community center. Here's joint use." You know, we can talk about, you know, how do we preserve city fields and school fields? We can, you know, fold in Greendale and 525 San Antonio into our discussion, so that we can produce clarity for the city about, on the issues that it needs clarity on. And I don't think we need to wait in order to know exactly when and what the parameters are for, for school construction on that site. We do have to give up some flexibility in order to do that. The cost of that flexibility, you can see in crumbling infrastructure at Coverly. And so, we shouldn't insist on, you know, maximum flexibility, because the cost of that is too high.
When you talk about maximum flexibility, are you referencing at all the covenant not to develop? Because that seems to be the logjam with, the school district's still wanting its $1.8 million, and the city's saying, "Absolutely not. We're going to try to get, do away with the covenant in the next lease."
Well, I think the covenant not to develop is, clearly reflects realities that are no longer there. And so, it doesn't make sense to continue it as if those realities had not changed. And so, I think both the city and the school district are going to have to give on this issue. I would look for a solution that talks about how we can take those dollars and invest them in a way that benefits both the city and the school district. Coverly is an obvious place to look. I'm optimistic that with a new superintendent, and new school board members, and new city council members, that we will see movement on that issue.
How about taking the entire lease amount and investing it at Coverly?
Well, I think that investing the entire lease amount at Coverly without a plan that's integrated with that doesn't, I'm not seeing that...
Well, we'll further it for that purpose until, I mean, that would put a lot of pressure on everybody to figure out...
Yeah, I don't, I wouldn't think that, that we need to take that, all of those dollars, and use them as leverage to get something done at Coverly. I think there's a, there's a pretty strong interest across the community in getting something done at Coverly. So, I, you know, I think that once we have a plan at Coverly, what I, what I do think we should do is, in the next lease, you know, we should be laying out what we want in terms of a, of a process going forward for coming up with a joint plan. I think that we, the moment is certainly ripe for doing that, and both the city and the school district should commit themselves to that process.
I want to ask you a couple of questions related to OCR that, that are somewhat peripheral to the core issues, because I think your views on the OCR investigations are quite clear. But some people in the community believe that you and your wife, Michelle, are partly, if not completely, responsible for the OCR's investigations, due to the professional ties and personal relationships that you have within the Department of Education. You're a consultant for the Department of Education, and some speculate that this entire OCR experience that this school district has gone through stems from your activism with the OCR. So, I'm wondering if you can help clarify just what your relationship is with OCR, and whether you can state unequivocally that you've had no conversations or any other communications with OCR about the particular matters affecting Palo Alto, and their involvement with Palo Alto?
So, my relationship with OCR is that when Russell and Ali, who was here in California running Education Trust West, and is a long-time friend of my wife's, came to California, she asked me to help her with data analysis around the achievement gap and other issues around achievement in California, and I did that. And she had some good successes, I think, due in part to that. When she went to Washington to join the Obama administration as Assistant Secretary of Civil Rights, she asked me to help out on some issues, really focused on the civil rights data collection. The civil rights data collection is a national survey of school districts that gathers information that's relevant to civil rights. And one of the things that she wanted was to expand the scope of that, to look at a couple of issues, college preparation for minority kids, and whether they have access to classes like algebra and so forth, and also differential discipline rates. So, I did that. So, that's the kind of work that I've done for OCR. I have not been involved in any of OCR's work around Palo Alto, or in enforcement generally. I mean, my work for them has been focused on the civil rights data collection. I asked the OCR a question about the rate of findings in disability harassment cases, to try to understand how unusual it was or wasn't that we, in Palo Alto, received a finding. And I shared that with the community, and I think I shared it with you, and I think you guys printed that.
But just to be clear, you have not encouraged, promoted, or recommended any action by OCR relating to the Palo Alto school complaints, the family complaints?
No, I haven't. No, I have, I mean, the family complaints, and let me, let me speak specifically, I can say that about every family complaint, that I have not encouraged those complaints, sought them out, you know, anything like that.
Or talked to OCR about them?
I have not talked to OCR about those complaints, no. I mean, the, the first two investigations that came to light, the first one that resulted in the finding, and then the resolution agreement around the 504, you'll remember, those came to light in February of 2013, right, 2013?
That's when they came out?
That's when they came out.
They were revealed?
I had no knowledge of either of those, of any kind, before that, before that time. I learned about them from the newspaper, from your newspaper.
Somewhat related question, because it involves the activity of your wife. She's been, along with you, a strong advocate before the school board. And I'm wondering if the two of you have worked out a plan or an agreement on how this is going to work if you're elected to the school board, just how you're going to navigate through her possible continued advocacy before the board while you're serving on the board. Should this be an area of concern for voters, or is it even an appropriate question?
Well, it's certainly an appropriate question, though. She won't have an advocacy role in front of the school board, because I don't think that you could fairly, I don't think the public should be seeing, or would appreciate, and rightfully so, seeing the spouse of a public official advocating before that body. So, no, she, she won't be involved in that. And she has, she has a lot of other interests that have been occupying her, and that she'll be pursuing in any case.
On the subject of student stress, which is one of the things that got you involved in school matters here locally, in the first place, I'm wondering, are you satisfied with the progress that the district has made in the last couple of years in addressing student stress issues, or, and do you think that there's still more to be done? And if so, what specifically needs to happen?
No, I'm not satisfied with the progress, in part because I don't think we should ever be satisfied with the progress, and in part because I think we have, we have let go of opportunities that we should have taken up and that were in front of us. So, so, for example, we adopted a homework policy that sets time guidelines and guidelines for the purpose of homework. I urged, and other committee members urged, that we, that the school board reauthorize that committee, or otherwise pursue work, to measure and assess implementation of that policy, whether the policy is having the effect that we expected it to, and whether, and none of that has happened. And so, I think that's, that's a real lost opportunity. It's not, you know, it's, it's not lost. It's one of the things I'm committed to doing after the election, and I think I'll have support on the board for that. But there is an area. Test and project scheduling. You'll hear many of the candidates in this campaign talking about it. It's an issue that is in our Project Safety Net plan, the, the part of the plan on supportive school environments, which, by the way, is where nearly all of my ideas around this come from. These are not my ideas. These are really our community's ideas in Project Safety, and I want to give them credit for that. That's an area where we had a focused goal a couple of years ago, to make progress, and there was no progress made. And the school board's reaction to that wasn't to redouble, you know, to our efforts, but instead to drop it as a, as a focused goal. And, you know, I think that was a mistake. You know, there's, there is a lot of work that we can do that's already teed up for us to do in the area of reducing unnecessary stress for students. We have definitely made progress on this, but we definitely have a long way to go. And it's one of the things that I would really focus on as a board member.
Now, the broader Project Safety Net collaborative seems to have kind of gone through some iterations, and I think most recently lost its head again. Is that project, is that collaborative working the way that it should be, in as far as you are concerned?
Well, I mean, I can't, I do participate in the Community Engagement Committee of Project Safety Net. I think that Project Safety Net has a lot of potential to do good work in the community. I think that it could use reinvigoration and more participation from, from people. And I think, in part, that's, you know, to be honest, because the urgency that we feel in the community around these issues, and that was stimulated by the student suicides, I think that the fact that we haven't lost more students may have distracted some of us from the continued need to work on these, on these issues. I mean, the, the underlying issues of youth well-being and stress and connection are just as important now as they were five years ago. But, you know, the reality is that it isn't always easy to get people's attention on these issues. So, I wouldn't fault Project Safety Net for that at all. I think there's some tremendously good people there, and it's a tremendously important organization. I think, as I said, the, the plan that they promulgated around the schools is remarkably good. And that's really what moved me and many others to pick it up and say, you know, "Here, let's work this." And I, I think the imperative is still there to do that.
We're running out of time, so I want to encourage some quick, short answers to some complicated questions that we...
Okay, I'll do my best.
...try to roll through here as best we can. On the English delaning proposal, I think you explained at debates your, your views on the actual proposal. I'd like you to comment today on the process by which that proposal came to the board, and where you think that process could have been improved, or was it a fine process, as far as you're concerned?
Well, I think that the process, I, I don't know the process by which it came to the board. I think it was appropriate that it come to the board. It's a curriculum issue that obviously is, was of interest to people. What it's clear is that it was thoroughly vetted by the superintendent and the associate superintendent. I think the associate superintendent spoke in favor of it. What I think didn't work so well is that there, it appeared that there was a lot of communication to board members that wasn't visible to the public, that seems to have had a substantial effect on board members' understanding of the situation, so that it felt in the room like there was already a prejudgment that had happened. And then the fact that the teachers were not invited back, practically speaking, for the second time, you know, I think that was a real missed opportunity. They should have been. And we should have, they should have had the chance to keep going.
Bullying policies, the board approved what's been called a bifurcated policy, where kids that are in protected classes, racial minorities, other kinds of disabled kids, that sort of thing, receive one approach, one, there's one set of procedures for them, and a different set of procedures for non-protected students. Is that the direction that you supported, or would you have preferred a unified policy?
I would have preferred a unified policy over a two-tier policy, because I think it makes it difficult for teachers and staff members to make sure that they are following the procedure and following the law, if they have to make a decision about whether this instance of bullying that they're seeing isn't just involved a member of protected class, but is motivated by, you know, by a sort of issue that's protected. So, you know, for example, a gender identity, you know, could be implicated in a way that doesn't necessarily connect to the identity of the child, as certainly has no by teachers. So, I think it put teachers and principals in a difficult position. I don't think that, I think the complexity isn't worth it.
Okay. If you'd been on the board when the Phil Winston matter came before it, would you have voted to terminate him, or to allow him to continue teaching classroom?
Well, I would have, I would have wanted to explore what the legal options were and what the substantive issues were. I thought that the statements that were made about, from the lawyer, really didn't cover the full range of possibility there. So, I think the communication to the public on what was possible and what wasn't, wasn't full enough. I don't have time to go into, into, you know, all of the details around that, but I think that was an issue. I can't really comment on whether I would have voted to terminate in a particular personnel issue. I don't think I had anything like the context that I would need to do that.
Well, the, the district released the full extent of the documentation that they had, and the fact, and their findings. But that wouldn't, that in itself wasn't sufficient for you to...
I didn't read those, you know, I'm not, I'm not trying to dodge your question. I just didn't read those with, with the question in mind, would I have voted to terminate this employee? And so, without reviewing them again with that in mind, I can't give you a good answer.
Okay. Let's end with this question. Will the results of this election, whatever they are, send some sort of a message to the school board and the school administration about this community's views towards it?
Well, I think that it's pretty clear, listening to candidates in the campaign, that there are some, some significant areas of disappointment with the, with how the school board has handled some issues, and in particularly the office for civil rights issue. So, I can't believe that the school board and administration haven't already heard that message. Whether that message will be modulated, depending on the outcome of the election, I really can't say. But I think that it's pretty clear that the school board's decision to resist OCR is not a decision that is, that is widely shared in the community, that the wisdom of that decision is not apparent to a lot of folks. And that's, I think, why you see most of the candidates in... And that's, I think, why you see most of the candidates in the race taking a pretty clear stance against that resolution and for resetting and going forward and leaving this conflict behind.
So that sounds like the answer to my question is no, it won't send a message because the candidates are close enough in positions that the election of one over another won't carry a lot of significant meaning?
Well, I think it matters to the district who gets elected.
I'm not saying it doesn't matter, it obviously matters. But in terms of message sent to--
Well, let me say this, I have tried to take very specific positions in this election so that when I'm elected, there will be a clear message that the voters want a 13th elementary school, they want foreign languages in elementary school, they want better language instruction in our middle schools, they want more focus on stress and student well-being, they want to address these achievement issues. I mean, I'm being specific because I want a mandate. And when I come to the board, I'm going to, I'm going to be able to point to the outcome as a, as a support for that. I, I would like to see other candidates take similarly specific positions because I think that's one of the great values of a campaign, is that it produces, you know, weight behind the argument, we should do these things.
Good, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.